Aloha, Kakahiyaka, Ka'akol. Welcome to the hearing for the House Committee on Agriculture and Food Systems. Today is Wednesday, March 12, and we're here convening in room 325 at the Hawaii State Capitol for our 9:00 AM agenda hearing. I am Chair of this committee, Kirsten Kahaloa, and with me is my amazing Vice Chair, Kush, Representative Kush, and our other members will be joining us later today. I'm just going to go over a couple housekeeping rules. Today, we have a long, long agenda to get through our triple referral hearing deadline, so we ask that if you've submitted written testimony and feel comfortable standing on your testimony, that helps us expedite our process so we can make it to session at noon today. That is our deadline to close this hearing, and we would ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes. If you are joining us via Zoom, please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify, and after your testimony is complete. The Zoom chat function is for technical assistance only, and please use that to communicate with our IT technical staff. If you are disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin our meeting. If disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. Please note that the House is not responsible for any bad Internet connections or technical issues on the testifier's end. In the event of a network failure here at the Capitol, it may be necessary to reschedule this hearing or schedule a meeting for decision-making only. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademark or copyrighted images, and please be cordial and refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior. Such behavior may cause removal from our hearing today. Thank you, folks, for being here and for your testimony. We're going to start with our first measure on our agenda, SB 177 S.D. 1 relating to aquaculture. This authorizes the Division of Animal Industry and Department of Agriculture to adopt a amendment and repeal rules to develop an assessment and approval process to move aquatic livestock within the state. First to testify in this measure is Hawaii Department of Agriculture.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Sharon Heard, Department of Agriculture. We stand on our submitted testimony as support.
Thank you, Sharon Heard. Next to testify is the Agribusiness Development Corporation.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Wendy D. C., and we stand on our written testimony.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have County of Hawaii Department of Research and Development in support, and Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Brian M. Moata here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. We'll stand on a written testimony in support.
Thank you. In total, we had seven written testimonies in support, one in opposition. Would anyone else wish to testify in this measure? Members, any questions?
Member?
Member.
Good job, good job.
Member. Seeing none, we're going to move on to our next measure on the agenda, SB 890 S.D. 2 relating to business regulation requires any product labeled, marked, or sold as poi to contain a label stating whether the poi product is made wholly ingredients grown in the state or from ingredients sourced outside of the state. First to testify is Hawaii Department of Agriculture.
Good morning, Department of Agriculture. Sharon Heard, we stand in support of the measure. We do offer comments. You have questions?
Thank you. Next to testify, we had Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support. I don't believe they're here today. Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, or just the Chair, Vice Chair. Brian M. Moata here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have a written testimony in support. We appreciate the legislature's efforts to protect our Hawaii crops. We do have a concern, or a few concerns, with the measure, though, as written. On page 1, starting on line 4, it does say that the product shall bear a label stating that the product is 100% grown. Our read of the bill is that it has to be on there versus not allowing it if it's not 100% grown kalo. So, we'd like maybe to tweak that to be similar with our macadamia nut labeling and even our coffee labeling in Chapter 46. And also, we'd like a little bit of time, maybe, for those millers or manufacturers who may have, if the bill passes with the current language, that may have inventor on some of their packaging. Because, again, our understanding is that if it is 100% grown, you have to put the label versus a labeling law that you can't put 100% grown if it's not 100% grown. So, it appears that if it's 100% local kalo, you have to have a label. Current packaging may not have that label. We believe that every poi manufacturer, everybody who's producing poi, would want that label on there. But, again, that would be their choice to put it on. Also, if they have current packaging, we would allow them to use that packaging without that labeling requirement or instead of purchasing stickers. And also, as with coffee, macadamia, and hopefully mamaki, we would like the department to get the resources, get those bodies, to get those inspectors, enforcement, in the measurement standard branch in order to enforce these labeling laws. There's no sense in passing labeling laws if we can't enforce them. So, again, those are our concerns, but we are in support of the measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next to testify is... Would anyone else wish to testify in this measure? We had eight in support and one with comments. Member, Vice Chair, any questions?
None at this time, Chair.
Seeing no other questions from members, we are going to move on to our next measure, SB 1276 S.D. 1 relating to agriculture, extends the offense of false labeling of Hawaii-grown coffee to include roasted coffee and imposes a $10,000 fine. First to testify in this measure is Hawaii Department of Agriculture.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Sharon Heard, Department of Agriculture. We stand in support as submitted by our testimony.
Thank you. Next to testify is Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. In total, we had five in support and no one else wishing to testify or indicating they wish to testify in this measure. Would anyone else wish to testify in this measure? Vice Chair, any questions?
None at this time.
Neither, nor I. We are going to move on to the next agenda item. As you see, we're pacing quickly. That's going to change as we get further into our agenda. We are moving on to SB 763 S.D. 2 relating to the Department of Law Enforcement. Establishes the agricultural enforcement program within the Department of Law Enforcement, establishes agricultural enforcement special funds, positions, and appropriates funding. First to testify on this measure is Hawaii Department of Agriculture.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Department of Agriculture stands in support of the measure.
Thank you, Chair. Next, we have Department of Law Enforcement.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Jared Ridulaim, the Deputy Director for Law Enforcement. The DLE is in strong support of the measure.
Thank you. Next, we have Agribusiness Development Corporation.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Wendy D. C., Wendy D. C., we stand in support of the measure.
Thank you. We have Department of Budget and Finance with comments. Let's see them here today. Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Brian M. Moata here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have a written testimony in support, and this testimony is the same testimony for the next, or the next two bills, all three ag crime bills. Don't want to spend too much time discussing... Don't want to spend too much time discussing the impact that ag crime has to agriculture. Just reminding the committee, the last survey, I believe, is $14.4 million is the impact to farmers and ranchers. It's another cost and expense that takes their focus away from the actual ag production. Unfortunately, it took an unnecessary and tragic death of a rancher to bring ag crimes to the forefront. It has been. It has been a big issue. It's an issue that needs to be addressed, so we mahalo the Department of Law Enforcement, we mahalo the legislature for scheduling and hearing and moving these bills. We need to address ag crimes. It is getting worse and worse, and we are unable to achieve our double food security goals, our food production goals, our farm-to-school, our farm-to-state goals, our farm-to-family goals. How are the farmers and ranchers supposed, able to focus on their ag production when so much focus is on ag crimes or issues like biosecurity? So again, we ask that a bill pass. These bills are different, and maybe the committee may want to consider combining the bills, because all the bills have all great points in them. Again, it is an issue that we need to address now. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Catamounts Council via Zoom.
Thank you, Chair Kahaloa, Vice Chair Kush. This is Nicole Galassi on behalf of the Hawaii Catamounts Council. We are in strong support of this bill because it will give the funding plus a directive to the Department of Law Enforcement to focus on ag crimes through this ag enforcement program. The department has already been engaging with the ag community already, so they also have the law enforcement expertise to make a difference and deter crimes at the same time. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. We also have individual testimony and others in support. Would anyone else wish to testify in this measure? Please join us and state your name before providing testimony.
Aloha, Chairs. My name is Austin Salsido. I'm from the West Side. I'm an ag landowner, and I fully support Senate Bill 763, because we're self-sustainable, but we have suffered losses. We're not being compensated for our losses. And we are, because we are small-time farm landowners, and these are pictures of suffering of wild dogs. Why would I say wild dogs? Dogs that was trained to hunt and kill, that was left behind by poachers. My area is Hunting Zone G, where there's no hunting dogs throughout the year, 24/7. But apparently, poachers come on our land, and we had a suffering of a loss of a rancher protecting his livestock, was threatened by the dogs, then had confrontation by poachers, was not supposed to even be on the property. I own part of the mountain, and the rest is by DLNR state-owned. But Dufa is aware of the loose dogs that's on our area, but we suffering the losses. These are four milking goats in one morning, torn trophy-style, not the abdomen, all head shots by all vicious dogs, and about three dozen egg-laying chickens. So, we suffer the losses, we suffer the financial losses, and the time to consume from a small baby goat to adulthood. So, I fully support this. We need state law enforcement, because DLNR, Dufa, do care, do care, don't care. Dufa, it's too far for them to come and protect us with law enforcement. We need DLE immediately, now and forever. That's how I support this thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. I'm Kalei Salsido. This is the reason I'm here. My nephew, Duke Boy, I've been reaching out for help for years before he's killing, okay? Execution style. It's not a game anymore. We want the help. We need the help. That's why we asking for the special force, because I have faith in the special force more than I ever have faith in any other department. The special force is the one that we need. HPD is shorthanded. Do care. Take away the do, don't put the care there, because it's not happening. I reached out. I had enough. If the things, these issues did not fall upon bright eyes and deaf ears, he would have still been here for years. From our senator to a rap at those time, he would have still been here. From board members, I brought it up, safety hazard issues. We're a sandwich. State owns in the back of me. I own part of the mountain. City owns in front of me. We call everyone. It falls upon bright eyes and deaf ear. Enough is enough. Please, do not let a mother and a father suffer again. Do not allow anyone to suffer like this or fall upon bright eyes and deaf ears. We're taxpayers. We're honest, legit, self-sustainable people. We're not out there waiting for handouts. I work hard. My husband works hard. I raise my goats from babies. I raise chickens from little chicks. I collect eggs every day. I do not buy store-bought eggs. After all the loss that I had, not once I had ever heard Kalei, Mrs. Salsido, how can we help you folks? Not from the city, not from the state. They told us, this is private property. You're going to have to bury your goats or do something with your goats. OMG, then why do I need your number on my phone? Why is part of my taxpayer money going to them? I tell you what, give me back my taxpayer money, and I'll go hire one special security to stay up by the mountains that I know I can trust. Don't not waste any more time pointing finger. State points to the city, cities point to the state. Well, I got two fingers here, and I'm pointing back to both of them. Take responsibility and do your diligent responsibility. I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother, and I'm soon going to be a great-grandmother on my auntie. I do not want ever hear anything on other child's life that I hold dear to my heart is unacceptable. We look up and we put you folks in office. Please, do the right thing. Listen to your inner heart. Put yourself in a mother-father's situation. If this was your ohana, how would you feel? You want action, and action is what I'm asking and demanding on the West Side. Enough of the crimes. Do not chop down my papaya trees, do not chop down my ultras, no more. Do not take my hard work, fruit of labor that I put in my land for your bad habits. Enough is enough. The crime needs to stop, and I truly believe, Vice Chair and Chair, you will stop the crime. Mahalo.
Aloha, everyone. Pikachu, Shelby, billionaire. I don't have my glasses today, just saw if you're looking for the yellow glasses. But since we're talking about Dole, Department of Law Enforcement, I do support the bill, but because we live on the West Side, we have a problem when we call 911, and the cops come maybe eight to 10 minutes. If they already came with high-powered rifles, they don't come with one person to rob you. They're going to come in multiple gangs or groups, at least three or more. So, if you've got armed weapons and they can kill you, rob you, kidnap you, we're supposed to be protected under HRS 733, but that's not what's occurring, because obviously, what happened to Duke Pia, the family, and other people on Hilo, Maui, Molokai, Kauai, it's not being reported, because they're going to come with muscle to 86 you. So, talking to Dole, you know, we got Mike Lambert, we got Redula, we also have Don Chang here for DLNR. We actually have a chance to do something. But because they said the Salsidos, the jurisdiction issue, if you've got private property, the cops can't help you. It's private property. You're going to need dedicated people. And the first time we ran through this bill, they weren't going to give Dole weapons. I said, these guys are high-powered rifles, weapons, machetes, all kind of stuff, to skin-cut deer. They're going to be prepared. You just can't sit some random guy out in Makaha to 2:00 in the morning without nothing. He's going to get jacked. They're going to rob his truck. So, we have to be thinking about practical reasons, how we would implement this bill, because Dole is statewide. They need manpower, resources, and appropriations, because they're supposed to handle the ports. I found out, talked to the cops and Dole, who handles the ports where they're smuggling all the drugs, fireworks, and contraband? State. That's not city and county, so it's supposed to go to Dole. Well, how can Mike Lambert and Redula do all of this when they just started? Like, we need to figure a way how we can enforce these laws, just like agriculture guy is saying. How can we work this together? Whether it's the reporting with the community, the neighbor boards, when we call, we've got to send something, make sure they're protected, so they can protect your land from robbers, rapists, murderers, and your kids, because you don't want something to happen when you're not there. So, thank you. Please support the bill, and I love your beautiful, all your committee members. Such great support. I love you, too. Aloha.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to testify in this measure? We're on SB 763 SD 2. We'll open up for questions from committee. I have a question for Department of Law Enforcement.
Good morning, ma'am.
Thank you, Deputy, for being here. When we move the House version, and it's also a question in the Senate version, is who kind of is the overseer and administrator of this program? So, you know, we have, we have language that indicates the Deputy Director and then the Assistant Chief, or is there an administrator of the ag enforcement program? So, I just wanted some clarity on what the intentions are so we can clean up the language. We know everybody has a role in this space, but who is in charge for this particular measure?
Thank you for that question, Chair. The way the department is set up, the Director is in charge overall. I am in charge of law enforcement programs within the department. So, all of the sworn law enforcement officers within the Department of Law Enforcement fall under my purview. That said, this bill provides for an Assistant Chief. In our structure, the Assistant Chief is a division administrator. So, for example, in this particular model, what we envision is that the Assistant Chief would be the division administrator, and that the investigative personnel and the patrol personnel would fall under the responsibility of that Assistant Chief as part of a division under the Deputy Director's purview, similar to the Sheriff's Division and the Narcotics Enforcement Division that currently exists.
Okay. I think that makes sense or provides clarity. Do you have any questions, Vice Chair?
Yeah, actually, a quick one, just to build on that. Thanks for coming up, and thank you for your testimony. So, in that division, is there a further breakdown for Outer Islands? You know, I recognize you guys are based here in Honolulu, and often a perspective from Outer Island, you know, we feel like the resources grow thin to further out.
Yes, so what the department's conversation is on this right now, this particular bill first mandates that there are, there is a division of investigators. I believe it's two per county. So, those are detectives. Now, the bill also, at this point, recommends about 35 or 36 patrol officers, and what we would do is we would take those 36 officers and make a division statewide, because what we intend to do is create multi-county coverage with the existing staff provided in this measure. When we have a large problem, something, a project, or now we have to, like, for example, focus on violence on the West Side or something like that, what we would then do is also take the collective law enforcement power of the department through its narcotics division, its criminal investigation division, and our intelligence center, and put those tools together, and then also leverage our technology. So, what we have is a really sort of synergistic approach towards looking at crime in general and specifically how we would approach the problem of agriculture crime.
Okay, so you feel confident you'll have assets on the Outer Islands?
Yes.
Maui, Hawaii, and Kauai?
Yes.
Okay. And then supervision and facilities, vehicles, all the tools?
And that's part of the budget ask that the department has also asked for, yes.
Great. Thank you. That's all, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I do have a follow-up. So, for the special fund, kind of programmatic oversight, in the bill, we have that the Deputy Director would oversee kind of the usage of the special fund. Just want to clarify if that's accurate, because it wouldn't be the program administrator. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We're just making sure the bill is as tight and ready to go as possible, because there was clarification on just administration and authority, and so we're just clarifying all of those. Just checking that we went through every single question that was asked about strengthening this bill. One of the questions that came up was related to should the ag enforcement special fund expenditures include maintenance functions authorized by the Board of Ag and funding for consultants to be mattered by the Board of Ag, or should that all be DLE? And that's a clarification. And so, maybe I need your position and then the Department of Ag's position on where the Board of Ag fits in, because there is language of their role in the bill.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't think we put a lot of thought into how the Board of Agriculture would interact with us, but certainly, we would expect that there'd be interaction. So, part of servicing this, you know, there is precedent in our department. For example, I ran the Narcotics Enforcement Division, and our customers were, for example, the medical board, the pharmacy board, and the Department of Health. So, similarly, what I expect is that we would also be the customer for the Board of Agriculture in the sense that we are providing services to support their overall management and administration of agriculture programs in our state. So, certainly, there is that interaction. I think that I would want to speak with Chair Hurd more on this issue, but we do expect that there would be definitely that interaction.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy. Chair Hurd.
We would defer to the DLE for actions with regard to the enforcement piece, things that have, matters that involve money with regard to the fund. The fiduciary responsibility would rely with the Board, but there is a threshold. You know, if it's, if it's a certain threshold, then we, the Chair, and we could work collaboratively with the bill. Good point, should tighten that up, but we do leave certain fiduciary responsibilities to the decision of the Board.
Thank you, Chair Hurd. One just follow-up question. So, for other special funds, is it the Board of Agriculture, or should it be the Department of Agriculture? Do you need to, do all, do your other special funds all have to get approval for, and this is not on all decision, maintenance functions authorized for the special fund, and then consultants and contract hires related to the enforcement of laws and rules applicable to the offense of theft of an agricultural product or commodity or by any other matters as determined? And right now, it's saying Board of Agriculture. Do you know if other special funds, the decision went straight to the department, or is this common that it's the Board of Ag versus your purview?
Excellent research and question. This is the only special fund that I'm aware of that requires the Board of Agriculture approval. All other special funds, we handle independently. This is one that we would handle in collaboration, so I think that feature was added so that we can defer to DLE, we can see where the monies would go.
Okay. Chair Hurd, if that's the case, I think I'll, we'll look at making an amendment there, because we want expeditious work to get this done, and so the concern with this part of the statute is you have to ask permission to utilize the special fund for enforcement or support related to agricultural crimes, so the process would take longer.
My goodness.
And that's a concern that you can't work expeditiously.
Absolutely correct. Expeditious is not the word. We meet once a month. We can certainly, you know, hold an emergency meeting, but I defer to you for that, defer to DLE. It is the only special fund that I'm aware of that requires Board approval for expenses.
Thank you, Chair Hurd. Vice Chair, any further questions?
Go ahead.
Seeing no other questions from our committee, we are going to move on to the next measure, which is SB 1249 SD 1 relating to agriculture, establishes an agricultural crime prevention program within the Department of Agriculture to provide grants, education, administrative enforcement, and other services for the benefit of the state's agricultural industry, clarifies, creates, and strengthens laws related to crimes and violations related to agriculture or agricultural lands and hunting. to agriculture or agricultural lands and hunting on private agricultural lands, establishes clear distinctions between administrative and criminal penalties, and appropriates funds to execute this established program. First to testify on this measure is Hawaii Department of Agriculture.
Chair, Vice Chair. Chair Hurd, about the background, should we stand in support of our submitted testimony, noting that we won't create the rules for hunting that are on these lands that we manage? Hunting on public land without the agriculture.
Thank you, Chair. Next, we have the Attorney General's Office in person.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Deputy Attorney General Mark Tom for the department. Department just provides comments for Senate Bill 1249, SD 1. Just with note to Chair and Vice Chair, we support the intent of this bill and what's in here. However, the only thing that we're wanting to let the committee know and concerns is the potential constitutional title issue. It relates to agriculture. Some of the provisions in there is, addresses hunting on private lands, which might not correlate with agriculture specifically. One way to maybe address this issue is to take a look in Section 1, which is essentially the preamble, and be more specific that of how the hunting on private lands might relate to agriculture, to kind of tie that in. I know that that's what it meant to address, but maybe tightening that up, that's one way to at least address that constitutional title issue. I will be here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Department of Budget and Finance with comments. County of Hawaii prosecuting attorney in support, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you, Hawaii Cattlemen's Council via Zoom.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. Nicole Galassi on behalf of the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council. We are providing comments, respectfully suggesting some specific amendments to ensure this bill will work well on the ground. We support this effort to update the laws, but as we highlight in our testimony, we recommend that increasing livestock inspector positions would be a better way to enforce these laws without having to create an entirely new brand inspection program. So, thank you for consideration of these amendments. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. We had other testimony in support from various ranches across the state. We have in-person testimony from Austin Salcedo. Aloha.
Let me show you the loss that we have. Pictures always tells a thousand words. Our losses, you're going to notice.
Yeah, if you want to go on the microphone, please.
Aloha. My name is Austin Salcedo. I'm an ag landowner on the West Side, Kailua, close to Oheke Lola Ranch, it's about an eighth of a mile away. But these pictures that I presented in front of you, it tells a thousand words. These dogs that came attack our four milking goats, we had suffered a loss. It was all headshot. No body. They were trained killers. Our area, again, I want to emphasize, Hunting Zone G, do not allow, it prohibits hunting dogs throughout the year, twenty-four seven. And these poachers that I have on my videos as well, too, they don't use the orange symbol of safety out there. They come right in my backyard. I own part of the mountain. They're right in the back of the area. Hunting Zone G is about, maybe about three quarters of a mile inland from the edge of the mountain. These dogs, these hunters, are found in back of, on the residential area of my ag lands. So, that's it. This picture I brought to attention shows a pit bull unleashed with a goat in back of him. This dog was never trained to hunt or kill. It speaks a thousand words. So, these dogs that attacked my family's milking goats were trained killers. And this dog is unleashed. He has nothing to do with this goat. In fact, he hates this goat. The goat picks on him. So, he stays away, tells a thousand words. But the encouragement of Senate Bill 1249 is way too long overdue. This must have been imposed a long time ago, and thank God we're going to have DLE and this task force. Please fund this thing, and it's going to hold all those accountable, including the juveniles who's committing these crimes, their parents, their legal guardianship will be held equally accountable. Parents got to take an initiative to observe their children's actions and hold them fully accountable, and penalize, prosecute at the most, and penalize them at the highest level. I support this Bill 1249. Appreciate it. Have it pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify on this measure is Gina Salcedo.
Aloha, AKA Kalei Salcedo. I want to thank you folks for even allowing us to be heard. As I heard that this city was private land, let me tell you, it's an agriculture private land, that's what I was informed. Agriculture, what part of agriculture we don't understand? We all know what is agriculture to be, self-sustainable farmer, ranchers, you know? I fully support this bill, and I do want you folks to the highest and hold the individual, because like I said, we're a sandwich. What a rancher, when my nephew were, there's no hunting zone on there, but in the back of the premises, the property, that's the hunting zone. They're crossing over to private property, to ranchers and everything, and it's our culianna? We got to watch out for them. Oh, only, we have signs all over. They know the signs. And as for the dogs, he would have been here. The dogs had pursued his calves that he was caring for. The law of rights in DLE and R do care. No dogs allowed, no exception accepted, period. The law is the law. We don't write the law. We follow the law. But if you're going to edging and abetting, allow these unethical hunters and poachers, two-legged predators, to continue violate the law, believe me, they're going to continue. They need to be prosecuted, okay? No exception. No exception. Unacceptable, unethical behavior. Did the parents train them that way? We don't know. But I train my kids one certain, I teach my kids a certain way, and I expect, when you come into my property, and it's private property, you're going to ask permission. That's the old days. You do not go in and just take things what you want. It's not the old way. Nowadays, the generation had changed. They have no respect. But it's the law that's going to be activated, executed, to teach them how to respect. So, I fully asking you folks and pleading with you folks, let's solve the problem, and let's correct it, starting from our unethical, two-legged predators. We're not the hunters. They are. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. In total, we had nineteen testifiers in support and three with comments, but no others indicating they wish to testify. Please join us.
Okay. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Senator Gannett, and Deputy Public Defender. We testified on this bill when it was in the Senate. My apologies, we're, our office is tracking about one hundred and fifty bills. I'm going to send this to your clerk, but I was going to discuss it. The Office of the Public Defender has no input on the previous bill, SB 763, regarding, of course, enforcement, or the bill that comes after this, SB 1257, regarding Task Force. This bill, we find unconstitutional. Unfortunately, Part 3, Section 3, turning a petty misdemeanor after several charges into a felony, is unconstitutional under the Eighth Amendment. There are other issues with the bill. Regarding HRS 142B, it confuses what is ordinarily administrative crimes with a C felony. So, you're mixing these two things up. When this thing goes to a trial, it's likely going to be dropped by the already overwhelmed prosecutors, and public defenders, and judges in the neighbor islands, and it is immediately appealable as it's unconstitutional. So, you have an opportunity here to come back and maybe defer decision-making to delete these unconstitutional, essentially illegal parts, or defer this bill and then pass the other ones regarding enforcement. The important thing, I think, to take away is that the conversations that have been had by the other testifiers, these are already illegal acts. So, terroristic threatening, trespass, theft of animals, the innumerable crimes that were just presented to you, these are already C felonies. Some of them are B felonies. They have like high jail times, you know, these are significant crimes. So, if you have issues with enforcement, you can do that. This one's just a mess. I'm going to hand this to your clerk, and then I can be around for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Would anyone else wish to testify on this measure?
Aloha, Mai Kako, Pikachu Shelby billionaire back. I did send a testimony, and maybe it was supposed to go via Zoom, but we'll just run it with what we got. Due to what the prosecution says, that's our issue with Yainai. We can't prosecute. You can talk about this stuff all day long, but when you get shot, murdered, and dead, you can walk out the door and not say nothing. I said, people are already dead. I'm not Jesus. I can't resurrect and bring peoples back to life. But we can't prosecute because we got DLE and R do care, and Dole right here. But if the prosecution office can't even prosecute because of the Eighth Amendment, you think these criminals who don't even speak English, from Russia, Sinaloa cartel, Jalisco cartel, they don't care, they don't even speak English. They're not going to read the Eighth Amendment, the First Amendment, they know the Second Amendment, and we've got real issues here. So, if you guys need to change the little verbiage and words, yes, please do, just to get him off our kolepuka, so we can get stuff done. Because if they're going to get robbed in Molokai, Maui, Helo, I'm so sorry, you guys are on your own. It's tough luck. But I don't like to be mean or rude, but hey, we just came all the way from Yainai, we still got to go with these issues. I'm not going to wait till next year for next legislation to get this stuff in the bill. That's just dumb. That is retarded, and I feel stupider that I got to tell you guys this, and everyone's going to watch this on YouTube. Why? Why can't we prosecute the evil villains? We just had the whole torture bill yesterday debate, Isabel Sellers, Kalua, and all these other things. We need justice, and I implore, thank, there's only you two guys, we don't got to convince everybody that you guys can make the right decisions. Thank you very much. Aloha.
Thank you for your testimony. Would anyone else wish to testify on this measure? Questions from committee members? See, no questions from our committee. We are going to move on to our next measure. That measure is SB 1257, SD 1, relating to agricultural crime. Establishes an agricultural crimes task force to address the issues of agricultural crime in the state, establishes the offense of agricultural crime to increase penalties for property crimes committed on agricultural property, and appropriates funds. So, first to testify on this measure is Hawaii Department of Agriculture. Chair, Vice Chair. Chair, Vice Chair. Chair of the Department of Agriculture. Thank you, Chair Hurd. Next, we have DLE.
Good morning, Jared Redula, the deputy director. Our department is in support of this measure.
Thank you. Attorney General's Office.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Kelsey Nagas, Deputy Attorney General, providing comments on SB 1257, SD 1. On Section 4, starting on page four, line five, proposes a new standalone offense, which would increase penalties for property crimes that occur on agricultural property. The standalone offense may cause confusion and inconsistency within the criminal statutes that already exist. To fix this issue, it may be best to amend each of the individual criminal statutes that should have an increased penalty. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Next, we have Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. We have Hawaii Cattlemen's Council via Zoom.
Thank you, Nicole Galassi, on behalf of the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council. We support this measure and appreciate the inclusion of both department leads, as well as representatives from the ag community on this task force. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Ohana Unity Party, Kingdom of the Hawaiian Islands. You're on this one.
Aloha, Mai Kako, Pikachu Shelby billionaire back again. I am actually the chairman of the Ohana Unity Party, and we do want to represent our local farmers, wherever you're at, on all the neighbor islands, not just in Yainai. I know we get a bad rap out there, because we're usually on our own, and we definitely support this bill and everyone backing up all the farmers who are suffering, you know, with water and other issues. But when it comes to crimes, and someone's going to try to rob you of your cattle, your cows, your chickens, you know how much eggs are worth now? They've even put the price on Costco. But she, Antika Salcedo, got a hundred chickens. Those eggs are like Willy Wonka factory. Those are going to give you unlimited food, unlimited resources. You can sell it, bar their market, but they keep it for their family to be self-sustainable. So, Duke, if you didn't know the story behind him, he loved the community, he loved his family, and he would do whatever he can to help support. But now that he's in heaven, I'm sure he's watching over from us. And like I said before in the previous testimony, we're not Jesus. We can't bring back the dead, but we can honor them with their life. They say you die two times in life, once physically and second, people forget about you. So, please do the right thing and honor Duke Pia and make this law into reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. We have Griffith Livestock via Zoom. You may start your testimony, but please unmute so we can hear you.
Aloha. My name is Bobby Joe Griffith, and I'm here to strongly support SB 1257, which seeks to establish an agricultural crimes task force to create the offense of agricultural crimes and appropriate funds to address the increasing threats faced by our agricultural communities, such as myself. Agriculture is a backbone of our community and vital. I thought I did unmute. Sorry.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. We can hear you if you have further testimony. We may have lost connection. We're going to move on to the test.
Okay, sorry. Let me start again. By establishing a dedicated agricultural crimes task force, this bill ensures that law enforcement agencies can better coordinate investigations, share intelligence, and take swift action to protect our agricultural sector. Furthermore, by defining and increasing penalties for agricultural crime, SB 1257 sends a strong message that crimes targeting agriculture properties will not be tolerated. And the appropriation of funds.
We may have lost you. Are you with us? Griffith Livestock was in support. We're going to move on to the next testifier on the agenda. We have Austin Salcedo.
Aloha, Chair, Co-Chair. I'm very fully supportive of Senate Bill 1257. This is long overdue. In fact, I'd like to introduce both parents of Krantz and Duke Pia in the House, Suzanne and Mike Pia. You can raise your hands and show who you are, if you folks can testify. I hope you guys testify. This bill provides a memory of Duke Pia, how he was vulnerably and unnecessarily murdered by poachers, bringing dogs upon the property, allowing trespassing upon property where there is signage like my property. So, I hear prosecution right now, prosecutors, defense prosecutor, I mean, defense attorneys in calling this constitutional. I think it's, well, unconstitutional to even murder someone on their private land when there is signage on there, not allowing any poachers, or anyone in that matter, unknowingly come onto the land without asking permission first. I ask permission before I reach into somebody's icebox, not these guys. Their mentality is to come on and do bad things upon our properties. So, you have, all these perpetrators, they have their day in court, but the increasing of this fine is long overdue. But the increasing of this fine is long overdue. Increase the penalties. The pursuit, prosecution and punishment at the highest level is long way overdue. We have suffered losses already in our area and human losses, not only our livestock. But again, I ain't going to repeat myself. But you have the day in court to defend themselves and explain to the judiciaries, more so to our branders of law enforcement, to explain to them why you're on private property to begin with and why are you acting in bad behaviors? It's not administrative. We're going to rule that out. That's what this law is based upon, administrative and criminal. But first of all, it's going to be cited as criminal. You have a day in court to explain your case itself. But for the most part, they have to be prosecuted at the highest level. That's my, my name is Austin and I approve this message. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Gina Calais Salcedo.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee. I'm Gina Calais Salcedo. Like I said, I'm a farmer, you know, we have ranchers. But I disagree what the prosecutor had made the statements. You know, we're the taxpayers. They're prosecutors for repeated offenders, okay? Repeated offenders. I've been through the court system where it's just a slap on the hand and gone. It doesn't work. What works is enforcing the law. That works. Putting higher fines will deter bad behavior. I assure you, and if they cannot pay the fine, I tell you what, I'll make them sign a waiver. They're going to be working on my farm and my ranch. For every single penny, I'm going to make sure they're going to have to sign the paperwork. I'm not going to take any more loss for unethical behaviors. And I'm not going to sit down and wait for another life to be lost. We need action. We need Department of Law Enforcement. And we need it like it was three, five years ago. We've been left in the backburners for too long. I actually vote and I plead to your votes, enough is enough. We need and deserve justice, just like Kakaako. No difference. We're taxpayers. We have the highest property on the West Side agriculture where gentrification is taking over. Gentrification is not paying my self-sustainable bill. They don't feed my animals. Our hard work, fruit of labor feeds my family. I don't sit and wait for handouts. My family and I do the work. So did he do the work and be a little small business, self-sustainable business that was stripped and taken away. Don't let it happen again. And don't choke Yainai in the backburner. Ah, Ole. This family, this island is so small. One way or another, to your blood vein line, there's relation. Are you going to allow that relation to be destroyed or that bloodline to be destroyed? Ah, Ole. Kia kua, I have it to watch. So does my Duke boy. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Raquel Achu via Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mahalo. Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair and Members. My name is Raquel Achu. I am the North Shore Neighborhood Board Vice Chair and our Neighborhood Board's Ag Committee Chair. However, I am testifying as an individual. My husband and I are ranchers, pico to our Waileua moku for decades. I've submitted testimony written on SB 1249 and 1257. I stand by my written testimony. However, hearing some of the comments today, I just wanted to quickly add that I don't, I can't say it loud enough. The extreme need and desire for help. Our agricultural industry needs help. We have, you know, ranchers and farmers are not rich. You're not getting rich off of it. It's a work of love for sure, but we do it to keep our culture and our sustainability somewhat alive so we can progress and not be so dependent on outside resources. Yes, we have laws and penalties on the books. But to the public defender's office comments earlier, making the comment of being unconstitutional, when someone blatantly breaks the law, comes to your property and does wrong to you, in my opinion, you've already waived your rights to any type of constitutional consideration. And I know that's not something they would consider. But we have constitutional rights as well. We are surviving. We are providing. I think we lack enforcement and prosecution. I attended last year's meeting at the Senate Committee for an informational briefing under the, soon after the tragic loss of Duke. And I was appalled at the statistics that were provided in the prosecution. If there's laws and penalties already, then do it, then pursue it. But it's not being done. We need to have a group that's focused and committed to stand for us. We want to ensure that our farmers and ranchers, regardless of city or state land, also privately owned properties, have the support and the recourse to stand our ground and be able to survive. There are significant losses made even when you just cut a fence. They think, ah, no big deal. It's a big deal, especially here. The cost to replace things is significant. It's a struggle enough. I think if we are able to provide a formal, a very comprehensive plan and structure to address these issues, create a stronger penalty persecution and enforcement, we're well on our way to ensure that the tragic passing of Mr. Pia is not in vain. Don't let that be in vain. We've suffered way too many losses. In 2021, we had a horse in Haki Po in her own stall attacked. These are not hunters, they're poachers. We've got guys coming in to just steal from farms, heavy equipment. So we are the ones suffering the loss and having to figure out how to navigate to move on. So I absolutely support, please, however we can ensure the proper and appropriate wording and verbiage to give us some protection. Because, you know, these guys come back because the penalties are weak. They come back stronger, more brazen and arrogant. And we're expected to stand down. But I'm going to tell you honestly, if I'm caught in a position of me or them or my kids and them, it ain't going to be me. We need help. We need help. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. We had 20 testifiers in support, one with comments. Would anyone else wish to testify on this measure?
Good morning, Vice Chair and Committees. I really want to see this, see SD 1257 pass. I want to thank you everybody for the comments and it's really been hard. Duke was my youngest son, my youngest child of four. And until today, you know, I just can't, I just can't believe in my heart. You know, the boy was a good, my children were good kids. They knew what was right or what was wrong because they do things that when I tell them, it only takes one time. One time, that's it. Because the next time is not going to be nice. I'm going to discipline them. And I think that's how it should be. But today, and to especially to find out a 17-year-old kid. I'm a former Marine. I've been in Vietnam. I know what is guns. I know about guns. But the thing is, I, I'm going to tell you guys the truth. For six weeks, I didn't do a damn thing thinking, why? Asked the question, why? You know, I know we are getting carried on, but the thing is, I need, I want this thing passed. You know, it breaks my heart even to every day. And coming back here, I mean, I mean, I'm retired. I got all the time in the world, but the thing is, you know, and I read, I love to read the paper and I, I read every little SB is, you know, it educated me. I didn't take, I didn't know it takes so long. But thanks, thanks for the Salcedos and all the testifiers and, you know, all the Departments. I thank you guys very much, but I need, I need, I need this bill to pass. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Would anyone else wish to testify on this measure? We're going to move on to committee questions. Can we start with Attorney General's Office? Thank you for your testimony. Our question is, can we get the language for the wording for each offense? And is, as indicated in your testimony, inserting that into the bill was one of the potential requests.
So we, our department is happy to work with you folks and the legislature to draft wording to increase the penalties for the specific crimes. However, if we can work together to have a dialogue about it, just because we would like to know what property crimes the legislature has in mind, rather than all the property crimes across the entire penal code, which may or may not relate to agriculture. So if you, we can have an offline discussion about that to have a more thorough and individual discussion of what specifically increased the penalties is. And as noted in our testimony, there are certain penalties already that exist. For example, I think there was burglary, which already comes with a Class B felony. And with the application of this standalone offense would actually denote, demote it to a C. So that kind of would be the rub that we're dealing with.
Okay. We will work on you. It sounds like we cannot amend this in this version, but can work before it gets heard by the Jisus Sherry Committee.
Yeah.
So they have that ready to go for their hearing if they choose to hear this measure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any questions? Seeing no further questions, we're going to move on to the next measure. SB 328, SD 1 relating to taxation establishes an income tax credit for capital infrastructure costs incurred in the conversion of a dairy farm to a hog farm. First to testify on this measure is Hawaii Department of Agriculture.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Rep. Peruso, Madam Lobo, and Madam Ophir, Chairperson. The Department stands on this testimony in support.
Thank you for your testimony. Department of Taxation. Thank you very much. Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farmer was standing on the written testimony in support.
Thank you. Hawaii Tax Foundation, Tax Foundation of Hawaii via Zoom. Not present. They shared comments in their written testimony. And we also have D-Bed who didn't indicate public testimony, but I am just noting their testimony in support. Purple Maya Foundation in support and one individual in support. Would anyone else wish to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, questions? Seeing no committee questions, we're going to move on to the next measure. SB 558, SD 2 relating to value-added products. Establishes a food and product innovation network within the Agribusiness Development Corporation, appropriates funds for food and product innovation facilities across the state and provides an annual report to the legislature. First to testify on this measure. Is the Agribusiness Development Corporation.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee, Wendy Gady with the Agribusiness Development Corp. And we stand in our testimony in very, very strong support. This really is about food manufacturing. It's also about rural jobs and growing our rural economy. We're here and present to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. We have the University of Hawaii System.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee. Artis Fungelso, on behalf of the Community Colleges. We stand in our written testimony in support of this.
Thank you for your testimony. Hawaii Department of Agriculture.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Rep. Peruso. Madam Lobo, on behalf of the Chairperson. The Department stands on this testimony in support.
Thank you. We had testimony from Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support. Ulopona Initiative. Welcome back, Michael.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Caught him right before he left. Representative Peruso.
It's not you.
I know. It's okay. Good to see you folks. Just Michael Munikato with Ulopona in strong support of this measure. Again, I think we've, we've come here for a couple of years now, essentially trying to find avenues to, to make agriculture successful, economically viable. Bills like this look to create avenues that can really help farmers take it to the next step. You know, we have a lot of young farmers and a lot of farmers that are struggling in general that are looking to take that step and scale, become economies of scale and get into a marketplace where, you know, ag can really be an industry that is very much so at the forefront in Hawaii. Again, this, this bill really looks to do just that, finding ways to, to bring more revenues to a farmer, even supporting some of these, these upgrades that, that may not have much value in certain markets. But again, if you tinker with a little, do a little local value-added processing, you can actually find a lot more value in, in some of your products. So again, we, we very much so are in support of this and thank you very much for hearing this, Chair.
Thank you. Next to testify, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Hi, Chair. Rami Mwana, on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau, was standing on our written testimony in support.
Thank you for your testimony. We had support testimony from the Maui Chamber of Commerce, Hawaii Forest Industry Association, support from the Local Food Coalition, and we have Hawaii Food Industry Association via Zoom. Not present, but in support. And one individual testimony in support. Would anyone else wish to testify on this measure?
Aloha, Calais Salcedo. I support the SB 558. As, as they said, starting the kids from young generation to teach them how to farm. That is the only way you can help them. I'm an example of one. From second to third grade, we farmed it. We ranched it. We milked the cows, everything. So if they get the education through these type of programs and knowing that one day they're not, they can't depend on a shipment coming in, you're going to have to rely what's on the island. And this is what this, this younger generation needs to know. 97% or a little more food is being shipped in. Be self-sustainable because when that shipment is not coming in, Hawaii, you're on your own and we all know that. But I am an example showing what I learned from a young child farming, ranching. You have to teach them from young. And if we can reach to them and help them grow to their fruitful adult, they're taking responsibility and learning what, how hard it is to be a farmer, then we're in the right start. I support this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to testify on this measure? See none, we're moving on to the next, uh, members, questions? See none, we're gonna move on to the next measure. SB fifteen forty-one, SD one relating to the Waiahole Water System. Appropriates funds for the Waiahole Water System for bond debt service and tunnel repair. First to testify is the Agribusiness Development Corporation.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Rep. Peruso, Wendy Gady with the ADC. We stand in extreme strong support of this measure and are available for any questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Ulupono Initiative.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Ulupono was down on his testimony, very strong support.
Thank you very much, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you Chair, the Hawaii Farm Bureau was down on its written testimony, super strong support.
We have support testimony from Bear, Larry Jeff's Farm, LRF, Hawaii Crop Improvement Association, and one individual testimony in support. Would anyone else wish to testify on this measure? See none, members, any questions? See none and no other additional super testimony in super support. We will move on to the next measure. SB sixteen fifty-seven, SD two relating to the Agribusiness Development Corporation authorizes the Agribusiness Development Corporation to acquire by condemnation any real property or interest in real property for the purpose of Chapter one sixty-three D HRS. Requires the ADC to make a determination that the property is necessary for the corporation's immediate or future use. Prohibits real property acquired by the condemnation from being subsequently transferred or taken for any other public use without the consent of the ADC. First to testify on this measure is the Agribusiness Development Corporation.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee, Wendy Gady, ADC. We stand in strong support and we are here and available for any questions.
Thank you, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you Chair, the Hawaii Farm Bureau was down on its written testimony. Apologies, it does say comments, but we do support the measure.
Says in support on our documentation, maybe not on your letter. Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to testify on this measure? Chair Chang.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning. I hope I'm. Senate Bill sixteen fifty-seven. And I apologize, I think we did submit written testimony. So we support it. We provided comments to this measure. Our only concern is that we would ask that Section seven B, which specifically allows ADC to condemn state-owned property, that we would ask that that be deleted, that land held by the department or that has been set aside by executive order to another agency not be included in the bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you Chair. Would anyone else wish to testify on this measure? Members, questions? Vice Chair.
Wendy Gady, please, ADC. Heather, can you maybe provide some context for the nexus of this or this, the impetus of this bill? Is there any specific goal? Or there was a reason for it or? What prompted it?
Okay. Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee. I'm Wendy Gady with the ADC. And in regards to your question, I think a lot of people have been asking, do you have something specific in mind? Do you have something that you're targeting? And I can look you all in the eye right now and say, nope, don't really currently. But part of the reason that we would want this is it's for the benefit of public safety. So for example, if there is a building, an irrigation system, or land that is in disarray, it allows us to have the opportunity to move forward with our goals, which are state goals, and help the state reach their mandated goals of increasing food production and developing, developing a diversified ag economy. Does that answer your question or does that prompt more questions?
No, just so it's for the purpose of maybe picking up dilapidated or underutilized agricultural properties.
Correct.
Thank you.
Members, any further questions? See none, we're gonna move on to our next measure on our agenda. Moving into invasive species and biosecurity section of our agenda today. SB seven four six, SD two relating to invasive species establishes a two-year coconut rhinoceros beetle eradication pilot program under the Department of Land and Natural Resources that incentivizes community members to collect and submit the coconut rhinoceros beetle and its larvae for compensation. Requires a report to the legislature. First to testify, Department of Agriculture. Thank you Jonathan, Hawaii Invasive Species Council.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Rep. Peruso, Chelsea Arnott on behalf of the Hawaiian Invasive Species Council. We support the intent of the bill and provided some comments. I think we really do need to invest in community-based programs for coconut rhinoceros beetle, but we also need to do this for the pests that are really widespread and established on some of the islands like Little Fire Ant too. Currently for the entire state, there's only two dedicated staff members that do outreach for coconut rhinoceros beetle. So really building up the program to support the communities, especially here on Oahu and Akai that are really seeing the impacts of coconut rhinoceros beetle. The concerns with the measure are reflected in DLNR's testimony and DOA's is just incentivizing bounty programs. You could have people that have ill will, you know, harvest breeding populations or go into traps and take larvae that are really important for data tracking and monitoring. I'm available for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next to testify is the DLNR.
Good morning Chair and Vice Chair. I'd like to apologize, I didn't introduce myself the last time I came up. Don Chang on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We like the HISC. We support the intent of this bill. We think that there is whatever creative we, ways we can to incentivize and attack, you know, this invasive species in particular coconut rhinoceros beetle. However, we believe that there might be unintended consequence, as Chelsea was saying, perhaps people breeding these so that they can get a higher bounty. We would urge, we, we support House Bill six four three and Senate Bill six eight zero. They provide the alternative of supporting the University of Hawaii and providing them greater capacity so that they can continue their efforts. So with that, I'm also available to provide any, any answers to any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you Chair Chang. Next to testify on this measure is Hawaii Farm Bureau. We have you listed two times.
Such an important problem. So do I sit back down and come back up? Thank you Chair, Vice Chair. I know we're under some time constraints. Do you have a written testimony in support? We didn't include in our testimony, but it is a concern, so we're glad that HISC and DLNR brought that up. And I believe DOA also. We're just concerned or would like some clarity on how it's gonna be determined if a beetle or larva was bred by human intervention. Is there a mechanism for that? Because that would be a concern again, whenever you do bounties, right? You have people raising these things to collect the bounty on them. So again, we support the measure and we appreciate those concerns from the departments. Thank you.
Thank you Brian. Next, we have Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support, not present in person, and support from the County of Maui Mayor. And we have Nicholas Olardi at Viasum.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes. Please proceed.
I am Nicholas Olardi. I am from Melanie High School. I would like to thank you Chairs for your time. I am in full support of Bill seven four six, SD two. I would try to keep this short. So I believe that this bill is necessary to save our coconut trees. I understand that we do have more unfortunate neighbors like Guam. But I do believe that these coconuts are important as well for our food security and our stability as other members were saying earlier. So I would like to highlight the fact that coconuts may not be a cash crop, but they are certainly a very important cultural factor and are part of many locomotives and can be turned into many things such as lotions, desserts, candies, medicine. And they are also a very important emergency service such as, say, we needed water services. Coconuts are a good source of emergency water if our sheds were contaminated. So I believe that maybe, as other members were saying before on the breeding, I believe that maybe we should have more laws or perhaps penalties set up for that. And so, you know, I would just like to also say that I'm, I know I may just be a passionate youth, but I really hope that my age somewhat reaches your ears. And though while this may not be a pressing matter or certainly ending the world, I do hope that since I made time during school and made time out of my day missing classes, that it must be important of something of concern. And this is more than just an assignment to me. Because ever since I took AP Environmental Science here, Melanie High School, I'm learning so much from my teacher, Ms. Jennifer Kohar, who I would like to shout out. And just going into our agriculture zone, finding those coconut rhinoceros beetles, learning what kind of damage they can cause. I'm not saying they are monsters or villains, but I do believe that they need to be under control. Thank you Chairs for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Would anyone else wish to testify on this measure? We had about twenty-two other individual testimonies in support. Members, any questions? Vice Chair Kush?
And this, this is a question maybe to Farm Bureau, HISC, and DLNR. And I'll just ask whoever maybe has an answer to it. Is, does anybody have any recommendations to thwart the, you know, the issue of people breeding populations of these for, you know, is there any other precedent, other bounty programs in the mainland or other places that you guys know of? Jonathan, come on down.
Jonathan.
I want to volunteer myself. Chair, Vice Chair, Rep. Peruso, Jonathan Ho, I'm from the Department of Agriculture. So when you look at most bounty programs, they're designed for vertebrates, not necessarily for invertebrates. In that most vertebrates cannot breed to the, at the rate and to the extent of an invertebrate. Like, you know, for example, you can get a bag of grass clippings, throw it in your yard. CRB can infest it and you can get that and everyone can make that. And, and it's, and again, I think, I think when you look at, I think, a lot of the testimony from everyone, I think, because the program is for so long, it's for two years, right? If you had an open bounty for whatever the cost is, right? Don't turn in all your green waste, leave it in, leave it in your yard and just go through it once a month and you could get a supplemental income depending on what that is. So to potentially address that, you could limit it, the bounty, to a very specific date and time. So for example, you could, and, and I think Akina Eha did this at Ho'oponopahia. You could go to a, a park that isn't an infested area. Everybody comes in, pockets are empty, whatever. You go and do what you do and you can then provide that remuneration. So it's very limited, you know, you can't bring anything and it would be very hard to sneak in, you know, and depending on how you're getting, doing, doing the, the compensation. I mean, that, that's one way to do it. Because I, I think realistically, you're gonna have to manage the people that come in and against the cost. And, and, or alternatively, if you make it very small amount, you know, obviously that, that can kind of offset it as well. And then again, limited submissions. But I, I would think that that's probably the easiest way to manage the middle, right? You have very, very limited timeframes. And then again, you set everything up, boom, boom. And then the next one comes up and nobody can really have time to really do a lot of that stuff over the two years period.
Okay. Thank you.
Jonathan, one quick follow-up.
Sure.
The bill currently has like a, a time gap and a certain amount of potential funding appropriated, but it doesn't have like a financial cap. If, have we done anything like this with invasives before where there's a recommended way to tighten this legislation so people don't create these potentially large breeding grounds to generate stable? You know, hopefully people don't watch this so they don't know the playbook that you just gave them. But how do we tighten parameters to make this a little bit more palatable to move this forward?
Right. And, and again, and, and I think, I guess, so I guess the way that, you know, we envision, and again, I won't speak for DLNR, for HISC, I think, with regards to the program, I think, right? It's designed to be educational, right? You're trying to incentivize people to show up with the possibility of getting something for it. Because generally speaking, most educational outreach camp, or most outreach campaigns come because you're interested. Now you can get people that may not necessarily be interested incentivized because there's something for them. And I think as long as it's focused to the educational component, I think the program can work. And I think, I guess, to the extent of using a bounty in Hawaii, I'm not aware of one, maybe somebody else is, but I'm not aware of one. And then, you know, other states that do do them, again, for vertebrates, and what they do is they license everybody. It's like, you know, you are licensed, you're registered, there, there's all these requirements that are set up. It's not designed for the general, the, the public in general, right? And I think that's where you can manage that as well. That's, so that's another opportunity, I guess, if you want to do it that way. You can create very specific people that do it. But again, going back to the fact that breeding is not very, again, leave it out in the yard and stuff will happen, so.
Jonathan, I'm gonna ask one follow-up question. Just coming from a neighbor island and a large island, one of the concerns with this bounty program is likely on, in rural communities, it's like one, might be one location for this collection or drop-off or two. So what we're doing is we're also moving these invasives potentially into communities who may not have them for the purpose of the collection of the bounty.
Absolutely.
And so that's a huge concern where, unlike Oahu, where it's not necessarily embedded in all parts or larger parts of the island where we are trying to isolate in certain communities for no spread. Is there language we can put in the measure that will ensure that because people aren't moving their bounty, just like we're trying to address movement of green waste, this is movement of the invasive pest, that it doesn't fly away as you're trying to get, go towards your bounty in a community that doesn't have the infestation, right? Like, because Hawaii Island, for example, Kona, we just started the infestation. We don't have it in Hilo. Department of Ag has offices in Hilo as an example, but if we don't have the infestation there, but we have a collection location, we will likely then have an infestation in that community. So I struggle with that. Again, on Oahu, it's a little bit different. Oftentimes legislation doesn't look always at the statewide implication of communities that aren't as spread with CRB as this example in this measure.
Yeah, so, so I guess going back to the educational component, right? These types of events, again, are designed, I think, for things that are generally widespread and you need more community activism to, to get, you know, to get past it. Using the, the Kona one, Kona, like this, this is not something that you would do in Kona. This is where, you know, the department, you know, the invasive species committee, committees, HISC, and the CRB response team. We have a limited number of, of, of beetles found. So now it's hit the ground running. What can you do now to ensure that what is there isn't spreading, right? And, and you don't involve the community at this point. It's just dedicate whatever, and maybe you have to involve the community depending on what you find. But I think this is the part where it's like, what can we do now with the resources that we have to get it to eradication, right? I, I don't think that this, this program is designed for that. So like, for example, you wouldn't do this on Maui. I mean, with a bounty, for example, because there's no CRB.
So we don't have any parameters though on this legislation that states what you just said. So I appreciate your comments a lot. But then how, how do we narrow this? What is the target market? Is it for a specific community on Oahu? And so do we need to amend the measure to just, to clarify where the? And so, do we need to amend the measure to just, to clarify where these programs should or should not be?
Yeah, well, so I think maybe, again, and I think, um, again, I think, um, managing, um, so I, I think when you look at the department's testimony, right? We were, we were kind of looking at a way to kind of manage how you deal with the, um, distribution of the funds. So again, if you limit the funds only to events that are, you know, run by DLR, um, right? They, you know, on specific dates and times. And you could then, again, you would eliminate the movement because nobody can presumably movement, move it because you can't bring anything with you to do the redemption. You have to collect everything on that same date and time. You know, so I think that, that's one way of doing it. Without speaking for DLR, I mean, I just, that's just my guess.
Thank you, Jonathan. I have a question for Hawaii Farm Bureau now.
First one.
Brian Miyamoto from Milani. Brian, uh, can you go into a little bit more detail of just, I think the intention of the measure is, has the right intention. So do we say you need to be, is, because this is for community education, we're not hoping that people create jobs in industry that, you know, we have now trap collectors or this other stream of maybe P business versus community engagement. So do we tighten this by events and programs run by state divisions or biosecurity entities? Is, are the, are the HISCs doing this? Who, who, who's making sure that they have the right expertise to ensure that the whole process and collection is as safe as possible?
Could you reword your question? Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Uh, before I address that, uh, and again, this is, you know, kind of all hands on deck, right? We have our agencies, uh, addressing one, trying to get the community involved. Uh, we agree with some of the concerns. Uh, we don't want to be, we don't want to create CRB farms, right? So maybe limiting, limit it as a pilot program to Oahu, right? So just for Oahu, which if you heard Jonathan, you know, saying may not make sense on Maui, may not make sense on Kauai, so, uh, on, in Kona, or even on Hawaii Island, so maybe Oahu, or maybe Oahu and Kauai, but starting small on Oahu. Again, we need some traceability. I, I like the idea of a registration or a license. We're, we're gonna collect data on those who are coming in with the bounties, and we're gonna be able to see, and if we do, maybe a shorter time period sunset it at a year. And if it is effective, there's efficacy there, then we can continue the program with money being available. But having data to, that may demonstrate that it's being effective and reducing in this pilot era, or that it's increasing. And if in, and the, the bounty may be a result of increase. Again, good idea, we want everybody involved, we want to address this pest, but we hate to see this lead to an increase in coconut rhinoceros beetle. Jonathan is, is right, you could be spreading it, right? But so if there's protocols also on what, what those bounty hunters need to do, when they collect them, kill them, and then bring them in. So again, developing some protocols, some safeguards and guardrails, but maybe limiting it to just Oahu. That might be a suggestion or a way the legislature goes at this point.
Thank you, Brian. One more question for Jonathan. Um, I, I think limiting and starting it, because it did say pilot program, so starting on Oahu is probably a good idea. Because I have not had enough coffee this morning, can you remind me if it is already a pest that is like embedded in community and not incipient? What is that language? Like?
Widespread? Established?
Established.
Okay.
Establish, I think we will tighten some language. Because by saying establish, we're saying not incipient, so some of the places you said don't have?
Uh, yeah, I mean, you can have, yeah, okay, yes, you're right.
Is that?
No, 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 yeah, 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 no. Yeah, no, I think, yeah, I think that's fine. I think to the extent, yes.
Because I, I think I want to leave a clause, a stop, or to make sure we say a stop.
Yeah.
Oahu has a pilot in established, where there's established.
Yeah, and you know, um, actually, Brian, I, I guess, kind of, um, I guess noting the pilot. Um, I think the other way you could do it conceivably, if you, I think, really want to do like a flat-out bounty, is, um, make, do it only for, um, I guess, a very short period of time, once. And then there's no way to breed. So you just do it one time for six months because the, the life, the life cycle is longer than, or whatever the life cycle, tied to the life cycle, so that nobody could breed it. Because you can only collect because there's no way to breed. I mean, that's another way to do it, um, potentially, yeah.
Thank you, we appreciate your help with that.
Coming up with ways to figure it out.
Members, any further questions? Vice Chair Kosh?
Just quickly, Jonathan, sorry.
Sure, no.
Just waiting for you to sit down.
Yeah.
So, you know, listening to this testimony, do you, do you have any kind of precedent or experience that, that in public outreach campaigns might be? Um, I mean, I can see how this could get people interested and maybe pay attention to it better, but is there other methodologies for pub, or, or allocation of, of taxpayer money to just like straight-up outreach programs?
Yeah, you know, um, I have to say, um, CRB is, um, I think, um, uh, one of, I think, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a better candidate for outreach to the, compared to a lot of the other invasive species, to the extent that a lot of what it does is very visible. It's, it, you know, you drive by a golf course and you see all the, like, you see matchsticks, it's kind of hard to miss. And then you have the, um, the cultural significance of, you know, the cultural significance, and then you have, I think, the, um, the use of coconuts or coconut palms as like, I guess, kind of like Hawaii, like, um, you know, in quotes, I think, you know, like Waikiki palm trees and stuff like that. So, I think from, to the extent of like education, like this pest is, I think, um, I guess a little better suited to education because it's a lot, it's a lot easier to see, and people are a lot more aware of it, really without a lot of the programs there. And, you know, and I think to the extent of education, like when you look at, um, us and all the partners, you know, HISC and, and the invasive species committees, DLR, a lot of education is out, is, a lot of it is educating the public for the pests. When you think about like little fire ants, right? A little fire ants have been here for thirty years, and there are still people that have no idea what they are, what the impacts are. And again, you're talking about something that most people can't necessarily see, they don't go outside in their yards, they don't get stung, so they're not necessarily impacted, they don't necessarily know they have it. Whereas this one, right, you drive on the freeway, you're seeing trees, depending on where you live, obviously, you're seeing damage. So it's a lot eas, like, I've never seen a coconut tree with these big V notches in it or with no leaves, and right, it, it, it piques your interest. And I think, um, you know, um, using CRB as maybe the, 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 I guess, the pilot for like a statewide, you know, um, outreach program for other pests, I think would be a good thing. Because there, I, as far as I'm aware, there's not been like a really massive concerted effort to deal with like LFA or Koki, um, as, as this has been, been done.
Thank you.
Members, any further questions? See none, thank you, Jonathan. We're gonna move on to the next measure. We have SB five-six-two, SD-two, relating to invasive species, establishes a plant nursery registry program to regulate the sale of nursery stock, requires certain plant nurseries to register with the Department of Agriculture, establishes penalties. First to testify, Hawaii Department of Agriculture. Thank you. Next to testify is Hawaii Invasive Species Council.
Uh, Chair, Vice Chair, Representative Prusso, Chelsea Aron, on behalf of the Hawaii Invasive Species Council, stand on our testimony.
Thank you very much. Next, we have County of Maui in support. And next, we have Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Representative. My name is Stephanie Easley with SeaGaps, the Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this bill. You have our written testimony, which contains a long list of states, uh, other states' requirements for licensing and certifying plant nurseries. Uh, we included in that list, that, that list has states like Alabama and Rhode Island. There's lots of other states we could have added to demonstrate that this is not, what this bill does is not onerous, it's not something that only big agriculture-producing states do. It requires someone who sells nursery stock to fill out a form online, to register with Department of Ag, self-certify that they are going to use good practices to keep pests out of their plants, and it authorizes the Department of Agriculture to inspect them as they have resources to do so. Um, any penalties that, for violations of that self-certification are civil penalties. Unfortunately, the definition of nursery stock now includes fresh fruits and vegetables. Nursery plants, because they are whole plants and soil that people, um, bring home and plant in their yards and property, are a high-risk pathway to spread invasive pests like little fire ant and koki frog. Fruit that we purchase at the grocery store and bring home to our refrigerators just does not pose that same risk. Um, none of those states on our list, or any other state that I could find, or any other government or intergovernmental entity that I could find, regulates grocery stores and plant nurseries the same way because they have different risks. So we hope that perhaps this committee would consider removing fresh fruits and vegetables that are not attached to the rest of the plant. And, um, finally, we hope that any nursery registration program will treat growers fairly across the islands by having island-specific lists of pests. If, for instance, a coconut rhinoceros beetle is found in a nursery on Big Island, the response would probably be different to a coconut rhinoceros beetle being found on Oahu, as we were just discussing. We suggested in our written testimony how to address that so that there would be, nurseries would have to deal with just an island-specific shortlist of pests. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Next. We don't have anyone else indicating they're testifying on this measure. Let me make sure I'm on the right bill. Um, would anyone else wish to testify on this measure? See none, members, questions? I have one question. I, I'm trying to figure out who to ask. Department of Agriculture. I think, Jonathan, just a quick question for you is, in the, in the way that this bill is written, I think the plant registry program, you know, we're trying to, you know, make sure that we're not bringing in new, any new pests or movement of pests. So I guess one of the questions are, are we requiring local nurseries in this measure but not holding those importing plant materials to the same standard?
Um, not necessarily.
Like whether it was a, I don't want to call out specific, businesses that sell plant material but are not a full nursery, that they do other thing, sell other products? So it's more retail establishments?
Yeah.
That have plant material within their significant amounts, not just like one plant, but?
You know, you know, I mean, no, no, so, so, and so, um, when we look at, I guess, trying to, I guess, parity and trying to manage risk.
Yes.
We do recognize that, I guess, the way that it's set up, particularly, I think, the measure setup, I think it's trying to met, regulate, I think, the nursery trade in of itself. And it is trying to regulate inter-island movement, and I think importation as well. Importation, um, particular, well, I would say, inter-island and intrastate movement, so within an island. Importation is actually, um, far easier for us to manage because there's only really one, two ways in, either on a boat or on a plane. Realistically, if you're talking about commercial shipments, okay? So, those things are very easy to manage to the extent of existing regulation because if it doesn't get passed, it doesn't leave the ports. So those things are a lot easier to manage. Inner-island movement, to some extent, is a little bit more difficult, but yet still easier in that, again, you have basically everything either on a plane or a boat. The regs don't necessarily require inspections for, um, non-propagative goods, so cut flowers, um, fresh fruit and veg. And, um, and then interest, intra-island movement, so within an island, um, you know, obviously, I think there's, I think, intent, and I think makes sense to try to manage inner-island, uh, within an island movement, it's just how do you do it? I think practically. Um, you know, the department always uses Banana Bungee Top. When Banana Bungee Top came, the quar, we, we did on-island quarantines, they put signs, all kinds of stuff, and the quarantines were immediately broken. And, um, and again, so when you look at the way the department has been doing quarantines, we do it on islands, basically, because in, in, within an island, just is very, very difficult. So, you know, and I think to, I think to add to our comment about like, I think, um, again, parity, trying to manage, um, you know, production of plants, which aren't, are, you know, no question, um, of high risk. Um, but other goods, you know, again, the flowers themselves, fruits themselves do vector, like little fire ant, for example, so like, um, for, um, what is it? Uh, like lychee Longan season, for example, Big Island? Like, I get guys on overtime to stay at Hawaiian and Aloha to try to inspect all the shipments that are coming out because they're, they're finding LFA on the pallets and on, on those shipments. Those are not regulated, okay? Um, you know, we, we've created a program, you know, working with, thankfully with Hawaiian and, and Aloha, to make sure that the stuff is inspected, right? To really lower the likelihood of spread. So, and I think, right, when you look at, again, the pests, um, the nursery trade is, is unquestionably a high risk, but it's not the only risk. I think particularly as it relates to like LFA and Koki, because those are like, I, they, they don't follow standard quarantine regulations to the extent that those regulations are tied to specific classes of goods or their host material. Koki is on everything, LFA are on everything. I mean, we've caught Koki on cars, on boats, on porta-potties, pipes. We don't regulate those things. LFA, you know, again, we've seen them on, you know, shingles, pallets, cars. We're not regulating those things. Sometimes we'll find them, um, for, and again, for other things. We inspect the car, staff sees soil on Big Island, soil cannot move because of rod, they're removing it, they find LFA in the car. So they, they get them to clean the car, but we can't check the inside of every single car, right? So how do you, I guess, manage parity for the nursery trade against all that, all pathways of movement? And I think that's where the challenge is. And, um, you know, when you look at, I guess, trying to get it done, a lot, I mean, there's no resources in this to, to, to effectuate it. And we don't disagree, I think, to the extent that, right, people can, um, vouch that they're meeting the requirements. But if you're never checking, right, it, it creates kind of this chicken and egg thing, right? We're posting it on the website that says that they're complying, but we've never checked to ensure that they, they're even in compliance or not. And a lot of these folks, we have no clue who they are. And, um, you know, we're in agreement that, um, you know, Hawaii is one state that doesn't have a registration or licensing program. Um, that, that's unquestionable. But, um, you know, I think, how do we go about doing it without resources? I think is gonna be a different challenge to the extent that, um, the department and plant quarantine as it relates is very different from a lot of the other states in that we spend a vast majority of our time on import. Whereas the other states are the exact opposite. They spend the vast majority of their time on export certification. We don't do that because you can't ship anything out, it's all prohibited for USDA, so, right? So there's this weirdness in terms of trying to manage both sides without any resources.
Jonathan, one more quick question. Are you, does the department support that amendment to re, remove fresh fruits and vegetables?
You know, um, I, I mean, I, I, so, I mean, I, I do agree with the SeaGaps testimony to the extent that, yeah, I think regulating a supermarket in of itself because it sells fresh fruit, you know, could consider, could be considered onerous. But again, like I said, it's not to say that they couldn't spread LFA. I mean, we, we find LFA on Longan all the time, and I'm sure, and lychee and all kinds of stuff. So, is that going to the supermarket and then going to people's houses? It's very possible. I can't say that it isn't because we're not going to the supermarket to determine it, but I know that staff are finding it on those goods now. And this has been happening for, and, 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 you know, again, we're talking, I think, like, you know, the commercial guys, you know, the, the bigger, you know, the, the, the bigger chain markets, but then you have like these smaller pop-ups, for example, at like, um, like a farmer's market, or you have like Chinatown. Like, there's a lot of smaller movement, guys are bulking and they're distributing, so, you know.
As we, as we kind of create and scale up this program, should that be included or removed at this time?
Well, I, I think.
To simplify our focus and our efficacy of what we're trying to accomplish?
Yeah, so I think, um, the requirements for a retail establishment need to be different from those that are producing. And this, this, this measure makes no distinction, even though it does cover sale. no distinction, even though it does cover sale, even before we started adding a bunch of stuff of it. But realistically, sale in of itself is a completely different set of standards than production. Because a, a seller doesn't necessarily have to do treatment, because the plant should be cleaned before they sell them, right? They shouldn't be having to treat their prop, or the sale, the, like, the, the site where the plants are being sold for a craft fair, for example. That doesn't make any sense, but it, it's, there's no distinction, and I think we, we kind of put something about trying to carve them out. But I, I don't necessarily know what that would look like, like, as, as I stand here right now.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Members, any further questions?
Just, so, listening to your chair, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Please go ahead, although it is nearly 11:00 AM, but please be quick.
Thank you. Listening to your testimony, it made it sound like maybe the department is not supportive of this, because it feels like, you know, nurseries have been, kind of historically, our entry point of a lot of the top pests, or implicated anyway, potentially. And self-certification, just as you're self-certifying, with the caveat that if someone says, hey, plants from XYZ nursery have LFA, and you guys go there and it's loaded with LFA, then you can say, hey, you guys certified that you guys were clean, and you're not. And then there's, you know, statute to work with. I mean, in my mind, that is, is that not how it is in your mind?
Yeah, so I completely get that, because that, I mean, that makes perfect sense, I think, from, from, I guess, from the, from an implementation standpoint, it makes sense, okay? And I think that idea of the department posting and then, you know, not necessarily being able to determine whether or not we're able to, you know, that the people are actually doing it, because I think the department has, you know, historically gotten a lot of flack for presumably not managing nurseries, okay? And I, I, I completely understand, I guess, that sentiment to the extent that, again, there is no necessary, there's no regulation on the books, per se. But that being said, we're looking at it to the extent of, right, well, I, I, I'm of the belief, and again, I think maybe this is just me, that regulations should be enacted with commensurate resources to ensure that the regulations are actually being effectuated. And when you're looking at this, I mean, and again, I have no clue how many nurseries there are. I think we, I was, I was looking at the NAS, National Agricultural, the USDA one. It's about 1,200 statewide, okay? So right now, certified nursery program for the department's 120, okay? Well, 127, I believe, we have right now. So you're talking a 10x increase in nurseries that need to be regulated. I have no clue how big these are. And you're now talking about the entire property, whereas the certified nursery program, it's specific areas. So you're talking orders of magnitude, more work to look. And should that be done? I, I don't disagree with it, right? Because those are critical control points. If you can manage the nursery trade, or actually any other trade that's a critical control point, to the extent that you can manage spread, that's great for everyone. But we don't have the resources for it, you know? Like, right now, like, right now, plant quarantine, you know, we're kind of doing...
I'll stop you, Jonathan, we gotta go, and I'll take this offline, but you, I'm going after something different. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Members, any further questions? We are going to move on to the next measure, SB 252 SC2 relating to invasive species. Clarifies that the importation of any item or material infested or infected with an insect or other animal, disease, or other pest is prohibited. Authorizes the Department of Agriculture to inspect any item imported or moved into the state from another part of the continental United States or between the Hawaiian Islands. Prohibits the sale of merchandise that a seller knows is infested or infected with a pest. Authorizes the Department of Ag to compel the quarantine treatment or destruction of certain materials. Clarifies penalties. First to testify is Hawaii Department of Agriculture. Thank you, Jonathan. Next, we have Hawaii Invasive Species Council.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Chelsea Arnon on behalf of the Hawaii Invasive Species Council. We're in support of this measure, but definitely want to acknowledge Jonathan's comments to really increase the amount of commodities that are being inspected beyond agricultural commodities. I mean, this is a huge increase in force. I mean, it's probably going to, like, quadruple the amount of inspectors that are needed to do this. But is it needed? Yes. Should we be having these measures heard and seeing, you know, this type of action being talked about and movement forward? Yes. I, I think this is really important because, like Jonathan mentioned, just with CRB and little fire ant and koki frogs, it's not just agricultural commodities, it's other commodities. And then we have threats on the horizon like red imported fire ant that definitely are not specific to agricultural commodities. So I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you, Chelsea. We also had testimony from Office of Hawaii Affairs in support, the Mayor's Office of the County of Maui in support. Now we have Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species. You're in person.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. You have our written testimony. I just want to highlight, to follow up, I, we absolutely agree that the Hawaii Department of Agriculture desperately needs more resources. These inspections of any item, it's not required that they inspect everything coming into the state. These would be administrative inspections. Hawaii Department of Ag could develop risk profiles if, for instance, tile coming from a spotted lanternfly area has been found to have that pest, maybe they would want to take a look at those tiles, which now they do not have the authority to do. So while we recognize the capacity issue, you know, this is like a, kind of like the nursery program, like a first step, like trying to figure out how to get a handle on the problem. I just wanted to highlight, when you read the description of the bill, that it prohibits the sale of merchandise that a seller knows to be infested with a pest, and authorizes Department of Ag to compel the treatment, that has actually been removed from the bill. The Hawaii Department of Agriculture suggested its removal because they said it was duplicative of the authority in the Chapter 72 Administrative Rules. We do not believe that is actually the case. The Hawaii, the Chapter 72 rules allow the chief of the plant quarantine branch, on a case-by-case basis, when they know that something is infested in a public area of a store, like bags of mulch with Sierra B larva, to stop the sale of that item. There is no blanket prohibition on someone knowingly selling pest-infested merchandise, either in law or regulation. The compelling the treatment of items for sale for the public, also, again, it would be that case-by-case situation, not a blanket prohibition. And also, that, when that same amendment removed this language that would protect the HDOA in the state of Hawaii from potential litigation for actions that say you can't sell your pest-infested items, or you have to pay to treat them. Actually, that, I believe that's extremely important language that would protect the state and Department of Ag from potential litigation. And on the second page of our testimony, we outlined how you could put it back in. Thank you very much, and I really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Next to testify is Hawaii Farm Bureau. We had testimony from the Maui and Chamber of Commerce in support, Hawaii Forest Industry Association in support, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support, Purple Maida in support, Big Island Invasive Species in support, and several individuals. Would anyone else wish to testify on this measure? Please join us and state your name for the record.
Aloha, Minako, Pikachu, Shelby, billionaire, back again, once again. I want to support this bill, and I guess I want to give my solutions to the past three bills with invasive species. So the way we collect CRB is, it may sound stupid to you guys, if we got a coconut tree, we get a bucket, you use duct tape or whatever, and we put a solar light, one of my friends' Proact products, Nate does it. So the CRB comes out at night, and they're attracted to the light, then they drop in the bucket. That's how we collect them. And then you kill them, just like that. I'm not sure why it's so complicated, you need massive resources to do these kind of things. When you Google where the CRB come from, they come from Southeast Asia, so Thailand, Vietnam. Word in the street is a lot of this stuff is coming through Home Depot. That's right, Home Depot, and those big organizations, because they're buying the cheaper wood, not from America, they're buying from Vietnam and Thailand. So when they're bringing the woods from Vietnam and Thailand, the bugs are already inside, in the mulch, in the moisture, in the fertilizer. So by the time they get sent to the stores and you're buying your product, it's already too late. You definitely need Customs Border Patrol, which we don't have, it's on National Geographic where you can bust these people. You don't see the dogs at the ports, which is why we're trying to work on Dole to get this enforcement. They're definitely going to need more appropriation resources, as we already discussed in these previous bills. For the fire ants, I highly recommend you get ant eaters and you hire them, because you don't want to have to pay for labor and insurance. I'm not sure if you guys can pass these laws, but the ant eaters will eat the fire ants. The koki frogs, you gotta eat them. We eat frogs, they taste like chicken wings, they taste great. I eat snake too, just eat the snakes. I'm not sure what the problem is. Turn into a delus, if people eat snails and call it escargot, call some French chef, cut that CRB bill up and sell it protein, maybe it lasts long, stays strong, maybe it cures ED, I don't know. If you got to put it in the bill, go ahead, put it on capital. Pikachu doesn't really care, but if I see her be, I'm going to kill it, I'm going to smash it. I'm not going to talk about it, but if you want to give a reward system, sure. Reward people for collecting CRB, we'll turn it in. Just, you want it alive or dead, that's the only question. Thank you very much. Aloha.
Thank you for your testimony. Would anyone else wish to testify on this measure? Any non-members questions? Any non, we're going to move on to our final measure, SB 1100 SD2 relating to biosecurity, and it has a very long description. So I would look that you look at your hearing notice, but basically, it establishes a lot of statute measures to strengthen biosecurity, starting with adjusting the Department of Agriculture's title to adding biosecurity, establishing a deputy director, dot, dot, dot. We will start with the testimony on this measure, as this is, has a lot of testimony. First is Hawaii Department of Agriculture. His Control Board.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Candace Eto'o. I'm an executive officer at the Department of Commerce. Unfortunately, Executive Officer Green could not make it, so we are standing on our written testimony with comments.
Thank you very much. Next, we have DCCA. Thank you so much, Hawaii Invasive Species Council.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Chelsea Arnon on behalf of the Hawaii Invasive Species Council. We provided comments on this measure, and like you said, you don't want to read the description, because there is so much on it, and it really is addressing a lot of the needs to increase and improve biosecurity in Hawaii. One action within the bill is moving the Council, the Hawaii Invasive Species Council to the Department of Agriculture, and we just don't see the need for this. I think there is a need to constantly evaluate the council and its effectiveness at achieving its purpose. So within our testimony, we outlined some actions to really improve the coordination of the co-chairs, which are the directors of the Department of Land and Natural Resources and Department of Agriculture, increasing the amount of meetings, and some other actions, and also making a five-year timeline to evaluate the council, and that can include the administration of it. Mahalo, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, HIS. Next to testify is DLNR. Chair Chang.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair and members of the committee. Don Chang on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We're here to provide comments to this bill, similar to HIS, and I think DOA, DLNR, and HIS is in alignment on this, which is that the transfer of HIS to DOA, we would, we, our preference is that it stay with DLNR, and that, that is, we support the intent of the bill, we support DOA needs greater, DOA needs greater capacity, but I think until DOA has the capacity to continue having HIS with DLNR, and as Chelsea indicated, I think what we recognize is, we probably need to do some things at DLNR structurally to make it a little different and more independent. They currently fall under our LNR 172, like what we did with Kirk, Koholave Island Reserve Commissioner Mauna Kea, and Aha Moku, they have their own DLNR ID number. So it doesn't get confused that it's part of, like, it's, like, it's part of DLNR. They are an independent entity. So I think both Chair Hurd and I recognize with Chelsea, we need to do better, we need to have better coordination. So that is our comment. I'm available for any questions. A little offline, I don't know if this is being viewed by anybody else, but... But we really, I think we very, we very much support the House Bill 427, very similar, but it doesn't transfer HIS to, to the DOA. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Chang. Next, we have the University of Hawaii System. I don't see them present, just checking, nope. With comments. Hawaii Farm Bureau. Thank you. Next, we have Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species.
Aloha again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Stephanie Easley with the Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species. You received our very long written testimony. There's a lot in this bill. I just wanted to highlight a few points of it. The first is the word "state" on the last line of page 22. This word places all of the biosecurity initiatives of any department of the state under the newly created deputy chairperson for biosecurity. This is a, an unusual provision. You know, we believe that each department has a role to play in biosecurity, and the head of that department, who is appointed by the governor, should be in charge of their own initiatives and not be overseen by a deputy from another department. We also believe that the HIS should remain where it is. Really interested and fascinated by the comments of making it more independent and changes that could possibly improve the functioning of the HIS. And we hope that you will do that. The next thing I want to highlight, trying to go quick. Section 27 of the bill, again, we're back to that 150A-8, the authority to regulate within an island and between islands. This bill takes away that authority, which is the, one of the implementing authorities for the Chapter 72 amendment, and replaces it with requirements that every agricultural producer in, within the state have their product inspected by HDOA prior to moving inter-island. The requirements that it puts on ag producers in the state are actually more onerous than ag producers bringing things from outside the state. Ag producers within the state would be subject to a criminal penalty for violations, ag producers outside the state, only a civil penalty. We think, you know, this is going to be, some islands don't even have an ag inspector, so it's going to be very difficult. And we hope that you will consider putting back in the language that allows HDOA to regulate within an island and between islands. And finally, section 22 of the bill creates the Biosecurity Emergency Response Program, which sounds like a great idea, but we hope that it can include county and state employees. The program authorizes the HDOA chairperson to provide pay and liability protection to individuals who are not state or county employees. They will be, so, those individuals will be selected by the chairperson based on criteria established by the chairperson, and receive a rate of daily pay established by the chairperson, including pay for participating in continuing education, professional education and training. We hope these opportunities would be available to existing state and county employees to efficiently build up biosecurity capacity within the state. Mahalo, and I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you again.
Thank you, Hawaii Catamans Council on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Nicole Galati on behalf of the Hawaii Catamans Council, we stand on our written testimony in support. Mahalo.
Thank you. Big Island Invasive Species Council via Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. This is Franny Brewer from Big Island Invasive Species Committee. We also submitted written testimony, and we do stand on that. We, we are very excited, actually, about the interest that this legislature has taken in invasive species of this session, and we really support a lot of the measures that are in this bill. But we also have some concerns about the proposed move of the Hawaii Invasive Species Council to HDOA. And sort of echoing what Stephanie Easley had mentioned about putting all biosecurity measures in one area, one of the things that we always go back to is the definition... measures in one area, one of the things that we always go back to is the definition of invasive species as laid out in both federal and Hawaii state law, which is that invasive species are alien species that negatively impact the environment, the economy, or human health and in Hawaii way of life. So it's really a broad range. Invasive species are not just agriculture. Agriculture is one sector of the economy that could be impacted by invasive species, but it's much broader than that. And I think putting this, you know, the purpose of the council was really to bring together all the different bodies in the state that have a role, such as Department of Health, Department of Transportation, the university. And the HISC really does a good job of, of, of bringing those together and representing all of those interests because invasive species is so broad in Hawaii. A lot of the, you know, we get a lot of our funding from the grant program from the Hawaii Invasive Species Council. And I would say that about 80% of our projects are not projects that would fall under the mandate of Department of Agriculture. It would be a completely separate set of work that they don't currently engage in. So this would be adding more to the plate of Hawaii Department of Agriculture, which I think at this point is probably not the direction that we want to go in. For instance, the core work that we do at the ISKs, we started out as early detection and eradication of invasive plant species. So trying to get ahead of the next Myconia or the next Albezia, right? What are those things that are out there that are just getting started? And that's the work that we've been doing consistently for two decades. Most of those plants are not noxious weeds because the noxious weed law was written in 1992 before the HISC and the ISKs and all of this was even set up. So a lot of the work that we're doing is on things that are, that have the potential in the future to impact our watersheds. And we see a lot of interest and support from DLNR on that because they are trying to support us in, in preventing those things from getting into our forests and impacting our watersheds. So really just want to ask that this bill be reconsidered to remove that section. And thank you very much for allowing me to give this testimony.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Sierra Club of Hawaii and intern.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We want to knock off the Sierra Club of Hawaii. We submitted written testimony, just, you know, raising significant concerns about the movement in the HISC under the HDOA, as others have mentioned. I'll just add that, you know, to the previous testifier's point, you know, watershed impacts is probably one of the most, you know, serious and concerning impacts of invasive species in terms of how it interrupts our water cycle and our ecological and cultural integrity. And, you know, I think that's something that's well under the purview of DLNR rather than the HDOA, which is more narrowly focused on its own important mission of food production. But with that, happy to answer any questions and thank you for, for all of your attention to biosecurity discussion.
Thank you. Next, we have Retail Merchants of Hawaii via Zoom. Not present with comments. Next testifier is Hawaii Ant Lab via Zoom.
Hi, thank you very much. I appreciate the time to give testimony. I'm Michelle Montgomery. I'm the manager of Hawaii Ant Lab. We stand on our testimony, our written testimony, and echo pretty much everything that has been presented so far by the HISC, DLNR, CGAPs, BISC, Sierra Club. We believe that SB 1100 does a lot to address overarching invasive species issues and biosecurity, which is very much needed. We're really excited that there is a lot of interest in this, shown in SB 1100 and the House Bill 427. But for this particular bill, there are still some pretty big concerns with the reality of restructuring the Department of Agriculture to be able to do an overarching oversight of invasive, all invasive species issues in Hawaii, implementation of that type of work, and the impacts that it may have to multi-agency coordination, funding availability for how, for us and our partners. And so that's all outlined in our testimony, our written testimony, as well as some suggestions. I do want to add a little bit to that testimony in regards to the creation and appointment of the deputy chairperson of biosecurity, if this is to happen. As stated in our testimony, the position should absolutely be a subject to legislative confirmation. And since this position would in fact be charged with overarching invasive species issues, not just in agricultural pests, any candidate should have some kind of cross-sector bound, or background in regards to invasive species. They should have a working knowledge of invasive species issues for, that would impact natural area or natural resources, conservation efforts, urban and residential areas, as well as agriculture. This would better prepare any Department of Agriculture and biosecurity to be able to address cross-sector invasive species issues and plan collaborative initiatives with the partner agencies, communities, and various industries. I think that is a very important thing for consideration. And other than that, I think everything is pretty clear in our written testimony regarding opposition to moving the HISC and concerns over the, the funding issues. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next is Lori Lures via Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Lori Lures. And there's been a lot of excellent testimony today from multiple organizations. So I hope that it strengthens these testimonies that I am here as a concerned Oahu resident. In addition to being a concerned resident, I also work with monitoring coral reef ecosystems. And I've visited Pacific Island nations at varying levels of invasive species invasions and mitigations. I've also personally worked with the Department of Conservation in Aotearoa and seen the success of coordinating resources and responsibilities across multiple departments. I respectfully understand the overall intent of this measure. Everyone's echoed the, like, increasing the DOA's focus on biosecurity will definitely be crucial to the successful of management of these priority pests like little fire ant, koki frog, CRB, and other high-impact species. However, I strongly oppose moving HISC from its current position, from being administered under DLNR to be administered under, under the DOA. And that's because HISC supports projects like the Island Invasive Species Committees. It acts as a second line of defense to stop invasive species from spreading into watersheds and backyards. And of course, biosecurity, as was just mentioned, is not just for agriculture. We should really talk about this in terms of protecting tourism, human health, transportation, marine resources, and watershed health statewide. Also, I'm pretty impressed that HISC and DLNR have successfully raised millions in federal funds for biosecurity and invasive species management. So any interruptions in this funding and HISC's funding and function could lead to irreparable damage from current high-priority invasive species responses. And managing invasive species and biosecurity is too big for any one department. And we've seen this exemplified in other countries and areas like Aotearoa. And again, this bill has lack of clarity in regarding how HISC could be facilitated under the DOA. So with all the testimony so far today, I think we can all agree that, you know, CRB is devastating our coconut trees. More ant samples are returning as positive for little fire ants. And we can all agree that this is a critical time, and making a disruption like this right now would be devastating for our fight against invasive species, especially in light of the facts that DOA has had little engagement so far and faces difficulties in filling critical positions, spending allocated funds, and controlling existing priority pest populations. And such a disruption could set us on a path similar to other Pacific Island nations that have lost all their coconut trees and most of their native species.
Can you please summarize your testimony?
Okay, yeah. I'm concerned that Hawaii could be forever changed if right now during this critical moment, if there are any interruptions to funds and efforts and decisions about management structure are not thoroughly and meticulously thought out. So I back HISC's comments, DLNR's comments, Ant Lab's comments to assess the efficacy and follow the actions that they suggested. Thank you. Mahalo.
Thank you. Melissa Chimera. Not present. Would anyone wish to testify on this measure? Seeing none, we're going to move to decision-making. Well, members, any questions? I apologize. No, members, any questions? Seeing none, we're going to move to decision-making. Just let me get back to that page on our agenda. Members, thank you for being here. Thank you for all of the testimony for SB 1100. We have, we had over 100 testimonies, so we appreciate everyone's patience. We're starting with SB 177 SD1 relating to aquaculture. We are going to move this forward and create a House Draft 1, change our effective date to July 1, 3000, create tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and notate the appropriation requests for this in the Standing Committee report. Members, any questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 177 SD1. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye and noting the excused absence of Representative Ward. Representative Loewen.
Aye.
Representative Peruso.
Aye.
Representative Quinlan.
Aye.
Okay, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving to SB 890 SC2 relating to business regulation. We want to create a House Draft 1, change the effective date to July 1, 3000, make tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. And then we also want to clarify the language around kolo, that we want to do the country of origin similar to macadamia nut legislation and be able to ensure that its poi is a value-added product, but there are other products in there to retain shelf life as well as water. It is not just poi. So we want to strengthen the language and insert kolo, and that is what we are labeling for the percentage of 100%, similar to other labeling laws. Members, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 890 SD2. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments and noting the excused absence of Representative Ward for this vote and all further votes unless there's a change to that. Is there any noes? Any reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to SB 1276 SD1 relating to agriculture. We're going to create a House Draft 1, change the effective date to July 1, 3000, make 10 tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. We would like to add a savings clause and clar, clarify the definition of roasted coffee. And that will be all. Members, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 1276 SD1. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Is there any noes or reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Moving on to agricultural theft, SB 763 SD2, important measure that we need to move forward. I do want to create a House Draft 1, make tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, defect the date to the House date of July 1, 3000. And on page four, line 16, page five, line 11, it is the deputy director. We just want to confirm that that is the kind of authority over this program while creating the assistant chief to focus on the program work. And then amend page four, line six and seven to include focus on the offenses listed under section 708-835.55 involving the theft of an agricultural product or commodity. And then on page seven, line two and seven, the indication of Board of Ag is the authority to define where funding goes. We want to make that the Hawaii Department of Agriculture and give them direct authority to make that decision. Members, questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on SB 763 SD2. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Is there any noes or WRS? Okay, seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to SB 1249 SD1 relating to agriculture, another agricultural crimes measure. We, we're going to create a House Draft 1, change the effective date to July 1, 3000, make tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, notate the HDOA funding needs in the Standing Committee report for staffing, all the things to effectuate this legislation. We do want to take the AG's language recommendations from their testimony and match it to the companion House Bill 859 HD1. And we do want to take the Hawaii Island Office of the Prosecuting Attorney's recommendation, a slight change to cross out the probation or language that they indicated in their testimony. And that is it. Members, questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 1249 SD1. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Is there anybody voting no or with reservations? Seeing none, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to SB 1257 SD1. As, as we hope to effectuate this law or Duke's law, we do want to acknowledge the loss of, of not just Krenz and Pia, but others in our community. And we need to move forward and do something. And this law can, this potential statute can help move this forward. So it's very important that we create a House Draft 1 and change the effective date to July 1, 3000, make tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. We want to notate the appropriation in the Standing Committee report. And then we're going to work with the Attorney General in hopes that they will hear this in the next committee to create more structure around each individual offense as indicated in their testimony. And that is all for that measure. Members, questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Voting on SB 1257 SD1. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Is there any reservations or noes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on to SB 328 SD1 relating to taxation. We're going to create a House Draft 1 and change the effective date to July 1, 3000, make tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. We're going to adopt, adopt Dole taxes recommendation on page two, line eight to 16, notated in their testimony. Members, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 328 SD1. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments. Is there any noes or reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to SB 558 SD2 relating to value-added products. I would like to create a House Draft 1 and add our House effective date to July 1, 3000, make tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and move this bill to further conversation. Members, questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 558 SD2. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Is there any noes or reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to SB 1541 SD1 relating to the Wailea Water System. We're going to create a House Draft 1 and change the effective date to July 1, 3000, make tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style.
Can we call Sergeant Tofferson?
No, we do not. We're going to continue as soon as the voice stops. They're working on it. We are gonna... We're going to take a brief recess and continue DM shortly. Aloha, Kako. We are resuming the decision-making only for the 9:00 AM agenda for the House Committee on Agriculture and Food Systems. So we are continuing on SB 1541 SD1. And so we are creating the House Draft 1, changing the effective date to July 1, 3000, and making tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. And we're noting the appropriation amounts in the committee report. Members, questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 1541 SD1. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Is there any noes or reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And that was a false alarm, so we're going to continue on to our agenda and hope that no other alarm goes off. SB 1657, SD2, relating to the Agribusiness Development Corporation. We're creating a House Draft 1, defecting the effective date to July 1, 3000, and making tech amendments. Members, any questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 1657, SD2. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Is there any noes or reservations? Seeing none, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to SB 746, SD2. We are going to create a House Draft 1. We're going to defect the effective date to July 1, 3000, make tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. On page three, line three, we're deleting the notation of captured in the wild, and we are going to instead say, at the end of that sentence, coconut rhinoceros beetle that are captured, just to clarify the intention and strengthen the language there. We're also going to indicate that the pilot program is for Oahu only, or I, or islands with population over 500,000 or more, and we're going to notate indicating that this is pilot is for where there are established pests of coconut rhinoceros beetle. Members, questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 746, SD2. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Is there any reservations or noes? Seeing none, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to SB 562, SD2, relating to invasive species. We're going to create a House Draft 1, change the effective date to July 1, 3000, make tech amendments. And that is all at this time. Members, questions or concerns? Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on SB 562, SD2. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Is there any noes or reservations? Seeing none, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Members, we're on SB 252, SD2, also relating to invasive species. We're going to create a House Draft 1, change the effective date to July 1, 3000, make tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. On page 19, adjust the language of shall be fined to no less than $1,000, but not more than $20,000.
Has been reported in...
On the original SB 252, we are going to take C-GAP's testimony and reinsert the language as indicated by them as well. Members, questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 252, SD2. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Is there any noes or reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Last measure on our agenda today, SB 1100, SD2, relating to biosecurity. Lots of testimony. We appreciate everyone for their time and consideration to make comments on this bill. We are going to create a House Draft 1, change the effective date to July 1, 3000, make tech amendments, and we are going to remove any language related to the movement of the Hawaii Invasive Species Council. The House Bill, similar but not the same, HB 427, HD2. We like that position of retaining HISC where it currently is, and I feel like we can't have a deeper discussion on all of the wonderful merits of this omnibus without removing that from our conversation as the bill continues to move in the House. So any, any, any parts of the measure to move HISC, we are not going to do that. We're going to take the House position and, at this time, continue the conversation on all the other pieces of the measure. Members, any questions or concerns? Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 1100, SD2. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Is there any noes or reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you, members. Thank you, everyone, for your testimony. There's no further business on this agenda. Thank you. Next agenda item, we have a DM only and then EEP. Okay. Aloha, my Kako. We're here in the Committee of Agriculture and Food Systems in the House. Today is March 12th. This is our 10:00 AM agenda for decision-making only. We're convening in room 325. This is a decision-making-only agenda, and first measure on the agenda is SB 1547, SD1, relating to the Special Purpose Revenue Bonds to assist alone Kauai farming and agricultural enterprise in the finance, operation, and maintenance of a project to revitalize the dairy industry, which was previously heard on March 7, 2025, at 10:30 AM. As this is DM only, there is no testimony. So, members, let me, let me find my DM notes. We're going to create a House Draft 1, change the effective date to July 1, 3000, make tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. On page two, line eight, we're going to take out the word "industry" to for, further clarify the intention of the bill, so we understand that the spurb is for a dairy. Industry makes it a little bit more vague, so we're strengthening that language, and that is the only changes to this bill. Members, questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 1547, SD1. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting, Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Lowen.
Aye.
Representative Prusso.
Aye.
And noting the excused absences of Representative Quinlan and Representative Ward. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We have no further business on this agenda. Thank you, members.[1775.83]